The, uh, this, uh, please note that this meeting will be screened. Is there any disclosure of community or interest in general there? Accent thereof? No? So, we have public hearings. These are going to take into consideration the bylaws, those public hearings. The first one is that council of the town of Espinola will be considering to request on the Espinola Fire Arts Festival.
So, the fiber arts festival organizers are requesting a temporary road closure to vehicular traffic on Spruce Street from Mead Boulevard with the exception of emergency vehicles on Saturday of October 19th, 2019, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. to accommodate free exhibits, which is the whole dome, mobile classroom and farmers market. And adding that Mead Boulevard and Park Street would not be affected at all by this closure, nor would the main entrance to the high school.
Do we have anybody here who wants to speak to that? Is that what you asked for?
Yeah.
Yeah, anybody from fiber arts festival want to speak to that?
I can, I can answer any questions that you might have, but that's, that's the gist of it.
Joe, any questions by anybody on the floor? Go ahead.
I would add that we did send notifications to area residents to receive anything back, and I haven't heard from anybody this month.
And this is really, uh, something very similar to what we've done for the last few years during the fiber arts festival.
No, we never asked for road closure.
Oh, okay.
It's because we have this mobile classroom coming, and it's a large bus. And to give great public access in front of the school is our primary goal. And they have safety and security issues that they have because they have these ticos. And the bus itself sits 31 people. And then when we were thinking, well, if we close the road, maybe we can also then partner with farmers market and create more of a festival atmosphere in that small portion of the road.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay, that's the public hearings. There's no delegations. Question period, are there any questions? Doesn't appear to be. So, we're gonna go into the consent agenda, and I'm gonna ask before we start, does anyone want to sever an item from consent?
Yes.
Said yes.
Uh, yes, J point two, bylaw number 29P7/19.
Yeah.
And I have a question on K one, so I don't know, do I ask the question or just wait to get to that?
When you get to there, you can ask.
So, yeah, I'll read the resolution. Moved by councillor Ray Difor, seconded by councillor Molly Manasson. The result that items F1 to K6 excluding item J2, containing part one, consent agenda vetoed.
So, we have the adoption of minutes from the September 10th meeting, any questions? Special meeting of council on September 10th. Special meeting of council on September 10th. Boarding committee reports. Some public library and corporate services meeting. Espinola Library Board Minutes of June 12th, questions, comments? Corporate Services Meeting of September 10th. There were no matters arriving from the in camera session. Number I, not I point one, justice arriving for board and committee meeting. Corporate Services Recommendation regarding budget policy. Recommendation regarding hiring policy. Recommendation regarding caravan driver. On your J. Which one do we exclude?
J2.
J2, okay. Can you believe that? The, uh, bylaw 2938/19, if you all in the bylaws concerned with the seating of the September 10th meeting. Then we have reports, following reports, public works for July and August. Need your services for July and August, economic development for July and August. Fire department for July and August. Joint Health and Safety Committee meeting for minutes of June 6th, Cosh foothills municipal association meeting minutes of September 9th. Go ahead.
Uh, K one, the Public Works Department, the number 13 triaxle. That's eight months now it's been out. Um, any idea as to when it may be fixed, or should we be looking at replacing, how much have we spent today, Conley? That's the, you know, is it really cost effective either?
Well, we're not discussing that, maybe, so I don't know if the chat would like to answer that, or if you want me to.
Well, you can go ahead, Cynthia, because I.
So, it's just that there will be other board board coming up on recommendations, actions for that.
Um, Mayan?
Go ahead.
Okay, under the leisure services department, I think that was a little big news report on the accessible matting. Been really nice to see that so many people, uh, were on Facebook and made comments and so on on it. I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Yeah, I can make a comment there on the leisure report there as well, he deserves it, since it's July and August. The Lions Club, uh, brought two days of, uh, we had five days a week of, uh, lifeguarding up here. And the, through the summer, I think 1,500 people avail themselves of swimming there during after your time here. As we leave the, leaving the school. Uh, K three, Economic Development Department, uh, departmental report for July and August. K four, Fire Department, departmental report for July and August, for July? K five, Joint Health and Safety meeting minutes of June 6th. K six, Cosh foothills association meeting minutes of September 9th.
I only have one in there, and I'm not sure if this is the right spot. But in the minutes, they referred to another contractor for recycling and waste management. So, I would like to see them also be added to our, um, request for a, uh, put by Card One.
Okay, so that's it for that, for the, we're gonna read the motion here.
Yeah.
Moved by Ray, seconded by Marie. We resolve that items F1 to K6 excluding item J2, containing part one, consent agenda vetoed. All those in favor? Okay?
This is J2, however.
Okay, we need a mover for J2. Okay, moved by Heather, seconded by Ken. We resolve bylaw 2937/19, the draft of being a bylaw should point the building inspector and property standards off, so. And this is sort of, uh, this is like a second reading, so why is this not, you know? Okay, questions, comments?
If I may?
Yeah.
When we did the initial request a few meetings ago, it was for either a full-time or part-time building inspector. There was nothing in there about bylaw enforcement officer. That was one comment, and the other comment I had is I have heard through the street grapevine that this individual has been hired and has been given or offered a severance package equal to one year's wage. So, I'm asking for clarification.
Well, we shouldn't be, if there's anything confidential or private here, we shouldn't be talking to voters in this meeting here.
Then can we?
Can I, uh, do you want to?
Pardon procedure.
Pardon?
Pardon procedure.
Okay.
Bill is right, you can add that on the in camera portion.
Then I would like to so do so.
Can, did you want to add anything else there, Cynthia, or?
Uh, well, I could comment, like, there is no bylaw enforcement officer.
It's a property standard.
Yeah, sorry, it's property standard.
Our, our billing inspection, billing group has been doing all the bylaw or all the, uh, billing bylaw enforcement, so they've been doing it for years. Okay, so, any more comments?
We are moving this to our in camera session.
You, uh, well, this, this part of the hearing isn't in camera, but do we want to hold off on this?
At this point in time, I would feel more comfortable, but I will agree with the majority of council.
I don't know why not.
So, this isn't in camera, this is a bylaw to appoint, um, a building inspector. Um, the other part of, of, you know, your comments definitely were for in camera.
So, we could defer this until after the in camera meeting then?
Definitely.
Okay.
If that's the consensus of what everybody wants to do here. Can I get a call, okay? Will we defer this until after we've done the in camera?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
The next item, moved by councillor Manasson, seconded by councillor Duport. The result that council authorizes a temporary road closure to vehicular traffic on Spruce Street from Mead Boulevard to Park Street with the exception of emergency vehicles on Saturday of October 19th, 2019, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. to accommodate the free exhibit, mobile classroom and farmers market, this perfectly annual fire festival, which is taking place at the Espinola High School.
Ready?
Is that gonna bother any citizens, though?
I didn't do a mail out, my honor.
Oh, okay.
Any more comments or questions? All those in favor?
The next item, moved by councillor Law, seconded by councillor Duport. The result that exemption to bylaw 196607, setting off fireworks, and bylaw 1189/96, noise control regulations, be granted for the camp quality reunion on Saturday of October 5th, 2019, to allow the Espinola Fire Department to set off fireworks on the traffic field.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Seconded by councillor Law, seconded by councillor Duport. The result that the site plan control agreement between the corporation, the town of Espinola, and CT REIT Limited Partnership, owner of the property at 801 Center Street be accepted and a bylaw be prepared to adopt the agreement.
Any comments or questions? I look at the larger drawing, the small drawing is very hard to read. I think we need to look at the large drawing and the exit. All of the, across the home hardware remains the same, okay? And, uh, we like the entrance to the A and W will be coming at the lights because there's no advantage in coming in at the car in the parking lot because, you know, you've got to drive all the way through the parking lot to get to the entrance to the driveway. So, I think it's pretty, pretty good from a traffic pattern standpoint. Anybody have any more questions?
So, is this footprint that I have, the schematic, is that the old schematic then?
No, it just is a very small array, the one thing came with the minute.
Yeah.
The agenda.
It's accessible.
Yeah. That's the move. Give me, no, actually. I think this.
It looks like the old one, that's why I'm asking.
So, you come in and you, so what you were pointing at, the triangle piece there?
Yeah.
That's what's there already, you know, where you come in one, you exit the other?
Right.
That, that won't change. So, the entrance into the, you know, most, most traffic will flow to the traffic lights?
Right.
And into where the drivers. Or they can go in that one entrance, like now, and they have to drive up to the building.
Because I thought this was the entrance that actually, uh, you could exit.
Yeah, there's an entrance.
Only going to your right.
That's right, yeah.
Is that the area?
Same.
Okay.
That remains exactly the same.
All right.
And it's not likely for them to get used, because anybody who wants to go to the A and W, if they take that entrance, then has to drive all the way through the parking lot to get over to the line to get into the A and W.
Okay, all right.
So, it really doesn't affect any traffic in that area, and you, and you've got the lights that will control the traffic there.
Right. Okay, thanks, Bill.
So, I'll re-read the motion here, moved by Heather, seconded by Ray. We resolve the site control agreement between the corporation and the town of Espinola and CT REIT Limited Partnership, owner of the property at 801 Center Street, be accepted and a bylaw be prepared to adopt the agreement. All those in favor? Okay.
Moved by councillor Law, seconded by councillor Duport. The result that bylaw 2939/19, being a team by law for law consolidation of roles, there's a 7-13, 700 in 73407-0595, concession 5, lot 8, plan M 75, lot 54, town of Espinola, lot 5, 49 Zico Street vetoed.
Any special comments? All those in favor? Okay, um, moved by Ken, seconded by Heather. We resolve that council hereby supports an internship opportunity for a regional economic development officer with surrounding communities, local services boards, and potentially First Nations. With a financial requirement not to exceed, you have to pick a number if you decide to go ahead, and hereby appoint someone to be a council representative. Now, I'm just gonna buy a little bit of background here, okay? And I guess, uh, there's opportunities to get an economic development officer where the government pays 90% of their salary, or is it two years or three years?
Three.
Three years. And then for an additional three years, if you decide to keep somebody on, they'll pay 75% of their salary. Then for another three years after that, they pay 50% of their salary. And at the Cosh foothills, uh, meeting here, we've got a consensus that, uh, that, uh, many people like to push, uh, push ahead, do that. Uh, this person would be hired for the area, not for the town. We would pay our roughly 10%, and there'd be some additional costs for car, or a few additional costs of office supplies and stuff that will go with that. But, uh, and we would share that cost among the group of communities, if you're the best of our ability, okay? And, and the idea is to work out an economic development plan that benefits everybody in the area. And, uh, they would be working out of Lambrec's office. So, they wouldn't be attached to any one community per se, but, but, uh, as a group of community, we'd have some say in what they're doing. Go ahead there, Cynthia.
I, I'd just like to say, um, so the group didn't ask for, you know, the financial commitment to be capped or anything, so council wanted to move that. I just thought it might be something that you might want to consider at this point, um, going forward. Everybody knows, you know, what the commitment is, but you don't have to decide yet.
Okay. I'm going ahead there, if anybody else wants to add anything.
I think it's good, I don't want to decide right now anyway, so that's, that's good.
I think it's good to negotiate, because if we make, if we put out a commitment and they save, and somebody in the community will say, well, we're not committing. Well, no, they've already covered the cost, or whatever it might be, so. What we want to do is have some, you know, sharing based on some sort of archery, like population, number of households, or whatever it might be, tax base. And, uh, and there may be a couple of small communities in the town of Allos who don't want to contribute, but, but it's a pretty small amount of money for us to get a full-time economic development officer and, and for the area. Hopefully that translates into improved opportunities for everybody.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Has this been going on anywhere else? Does anybody know?
The island has an economic.
Well, other than that, though. Anywhere else? That wasn't here.
I was at a conference, uh, at AMO a couple of years ago, I've been at a couple of conferences in southern Ontario, which is kind of common, you have, uh, a number of townships get together and, uh, share an economic development officer. To get these grants, uh, you're not likely going to get grants just for one community, so by tying in several communities of the First Nations, uh, we can, it makes it much more likely we'll be able to get somebody.
So, AMO would know the most about this?
Uh, AMO or, or Roma, maybe it's not a Roma conference, I can't tell you which conference I was at.
I can check, okay, thanks, Bill.
I mean, it's relatively common for, for the smaller communities to get something from the area. Ken?
I think it's a great idea. I agree with the staff report in the fact that it's very difficult to measure progress on this. So, it doesn't mean that we don't step into it, also. Uh, if, it says here, if initiatives are in the community, it's the responsibility of Espinola to take care of it, that gives us control.
And it's not that we're gonna push what we're already doing on that person. This person's gonna look at, trying to look at the advantages and disadvantages of the whole area to see if they can come up with programs to, to support the whole area. If something good happens in Espinola or Massey, it helps everybody.
Sure.
Ken?
Do we want to choose a rep right now, or can we wait also when we decide financially?
Um, yeah, probably, I guess, so you could just amend the motion ended after potential First Nations, I guess.
Okay, whether we remove the dollars, and the motion remove the dollars, and the other thing will just. Okay, I'll re-read the motion, moved by Ken, seconded by Heather. We resolve that council hereby supports an internship opportunity for a regional economic development officer with surrounding municipalities, local services boards, and potentially First Nations. All those in favor? Okay, Oracle poll information, I think that's just the information for us.
And there's a reference to, uh.
Okay. We're gonna have the Oracle polling, it'll be used when it provides some basis of support for some of the decisions that we're making. Moved by Heather, seconded by Ray. We resolve that council hereby steps a 2019 citizenship survey report. All those in favor? Okay, then we have correspondence for the information only. Uh, one of them was budget challenges for 2020. And then the lady always called in on a couple of things that Cynthia had raised. Uh, we're suspecting that cuts to health and social services could present a significant challenge. The old hip grant that has been decreasing, uh, has been declining about 3% to 5% a year. Uh, we're expecting that this could affect us to the tune of 60,000 to 100,000 dollars a year, like 26 to 42, $44 a household. We've had some problems and challenges with some of the students. And we're anticipating that there may be fewer grants available for capital projects. But we do have, uh, we do have the portion of Highway 6, uh, grant that was approved earlier, and we'll be doing the work next year. Our, uh, price, the Canadian price inflation index is expected to be about 2%. We do have some QP contracts, and they expire at the end of the year. And we have some garbage and recycling contracts that will be removed, and if you don't know where those are. Okay, so let's.
Just add one on there, you may have known, Cynthia, to add the, the environmental to, yeah.
I'm gonna look some of that, like a panel. Information, this information was previously circulated to council. It required the caution information available at the municipal offices. MMAH correspondence, More Homes, More Choices Act. All the region correspondence, local planning and appeal tribunal. And three, Blue Sky News, Net News release. And four, township of water lake resolutions, electronic allegations. There were no conferences or conventions. And there were two mayor and council reports in the notes. Great.
Well, I do, I have a notice of motion. Uh, the result that the report from Morrell Mallow of Gallup Group, formerly the Degreen Group, the town of Espinola Human Resources Consultant, that was discussed in camera at May 28th special meeting, that was discussed in camera at May twenty-eighth special meeting must be presented to council as a whole, honored before October the eighth, twenty nineteen. And furthermore, that all information be disclosed during said council of the whole meeting, including all phone conversations and all means of communication concerning this personnel matter. I would require a secondary if I may?
This is a notice of motion, all those for the next meeting?
If they consider it now, I would like it to be put on today's agenda as well. That'll be at the council as a whole.
Okay, so we have a, a motion to, uh, notice of motion if we want to have that. Be it resolved that the report from Morrell Mallow formerly of the town of Estenola Resources, formerly DeGruene Group, the town of Estenola Human Resources Consultant that was discussed in camera on May twenty-eighth must be presented to council as a whole on or before October eighth. And furthermore, that all information be disclosed during said council and whole meeting, including all phone conversations, all means of communication concerning this personnel matter. Was this discussed in camera?
Everything was, that's why there's nothing further with it. So this is just a, then the next.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So are we gonna, are we gonna read to listen to tonight?
You're gonna go all the way over?
I'm just gonna, I, you know. So all those, uh, all those in favor?
Would like to hear the motion.
So this is a motion that we agreed to listen to tonight. Uh, moved by Maureen, seconded by Ray. Speedy resolved that the report from Morrell Mallow of the Gallup Group, formerly DeGruene Group, the town of Estenola Human Resources Consultant that was discussed in camera on May twenty-eighth meeting must be presented to council as a whole on or before October the eighth, two thousand and nineteen. And furthermore, that all information be disclosed during said council and whole meeting, including all phone conversations and all means of communication concerning this matter. Do you have any discussion on this?
There's supposed to be some information, some new information as the mayor said a couple of weeks ago. And they said we'll be holding a meeting in response to that, but in response to that, but nothing's come across, yeah?
Diane Anderson. My understanding just from the mayor is that it was scheduled for October twenty-second, but she'd have to confirm that because she was arranging it with, with him because of the schedule. So I, I thought there was something, I thought there was any now, but I could be wrong.
Anybody else have anything to comment? October eighth is what, is about a week and a half away?
Next council meeting.
Is that our next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so we can hold it, uh, after the council meeting if we want to. All those in favor?
I have one other, just a notice of motion. And I would like a staff report to follow if it goes through. The notice of motion is to be it resolved that all reports to council limited time period for the background information to the current year and one prior calendar year. And further, that staff be cognitiv of the time and resources required in preparing the reports to ensure the best use of said time and resources. I'd like to have a clear discussion and report if possible for our next meeting.
For the next meeting?
Yes.
So we just, we need a one motion. We just, we're here and we're still up on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Ken?
Uh, next, I'm not finished yet.
I just have the comments on the beach, okay, they're very good. Uh, you see to that, okay, there's some. And they don't have anything else? They have, uh, German in the meeting here also? Okay. Oh yeah, okay, there's a future council meeting, market service meeting on October first, which shows here, and a special meeting in council on October second, and that's going to be open to the public. And it's, uh, it's sort of a training, I guess it's a training session on, on, uh, the interaction between staff and, and council, okay? And, uh, I'll call it the, what we should be doing is part of our job and what staff should be doing is part of ours, so we both encroach on each other's, uh, territory. I think that's showing anybody, it shows a lot of virtue.
And the time is still wonderful.
The one on October second, it goes from one to five PM at the public library. And the corporate service is running on October first at four PM. Okay, so we must have, uh, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
But we have a, a resolution, uh, motion to, uh, have a meeting here. Moved by Heather, seconded by Ray. It is all of the regular meeting that council wants here by the German. And I've got, uh, twenty-two, eight, one forty, at my watch. All those in favor?